Indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
We do have a proclamation I'd like to read and then present. Whereas Ernest Ernie R. Wapishaw passed away on March 28, 2013, and whereas the City of Winona remembers him as Chief Wapishaw, and whereas Chief Wapishaw was a dear friend of the Winona community, who worked for the betterment of his people and a better understanding between the Dakota people and Winona citizens, and whereas the City of Winona and its people have benefited greatly from knowing and interacting with Chief Wapishaw and his wife Renee and son Leonard and family and friends, and whereas Ernest Chief Wapishaw will be missed by his Winona friends, now therefore I, Mayor Mark Peterson, do hereby call upon all the citizens of the City of Winona to recognize Saturday, September 14, 2013, as Ernest R. Wapishaw Day in the City of Winona, Minnesota. And I believe Debbie White would like to, would you like to say just a couple of words about the event coming up?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's pretty self-explanatory, especially with those of you that have been with it kind of at the beginning, if it wasn't for Chief Wapishaw and his family, his wife Renee and his son Leonard, the history of the Wapishaws go way back as when a few left, I believe, in the United States for the Dakotas, and it's a great honor. And he passed away this year, I believe. Their tradition is they don't do this, but we did talk with his wife and we did talk with Leonard, and they said they'd be very honored that we would do this for Ernie. And he was instrumental in getting the Dakota Gathering started. He came here all the time, even when his health was failing, he made sure that he came here to see, because he said it was so very, very important that we recognize that reconciliation with the Dakota Nations, and he continued to do so. And I want to thank our community especially as well for being so supportive of us all these years. Thank you.
Want to say a word about the event, the dates, and what's coming up?
Well, thank you. We'll segue right into that. I hope everyone, I got a brochure, I asked Monica to hand that out. This will be our second year though in September. We always had the event in the beginning of June, so it'll be the second weekend in September. That'll be the 13th, 14th, and 15th. And also on the back, we've considered our honoring Chief Ernest Wapishaw Day as well. Really important is new for us this second year is Youth Education Day, which is the Winona Public Schools are coming for, or all-day event, all the third graders. So we started that last year, was a huge success with the collaboration of the schools and the teachers and our Dakota educators as well are coming. So it'll be a nice full day. We also have all Saturday and all Sunday, we have, you know, the basic things we've always had, but new on Friday, I do want to mention it real briefly, Mayor, is they have a dance instead of our grand entry, we have a dance called Forty-Nine, the number, Numbers Forty-Nine. And apparently it's really known as a friendship dance. It's also been known as a love recording dance as well. So it's a slower drum beat, and the community is really encouraged and invited to step out there and dance with us. And we thought that was very appropriate because we are calling and celebrating our friendships. It's our 10th year, and also we're going to be signing, we hope, with another Dakota Nations or two or more, a covenant of friendship that has been a long history with the city as well, that when Mayor Miller was here and the council did pass that. So that's going to be very important, and so we're going to tie all that together. Police cops, the work, and we can use volunteers as well for that event. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I have one other announcement I guess I'd like to make. I learned this afternoon that a very active citizen of Winona, a good friend of mine, and Jim Erickson passed away, and I just want to extend my sympathies to Jim's wife Ruth and their daughter Pam and their husband Terry. And that's all.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items. First of all, as a result of the meeting we just had prior to this council meeting, I just want to inform the public that there will be a meeting on the Winona Bridge on August 12th, which is next Monday. It will be held at the Armory from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. with a formal presentation by MinDOT at 5:00. So if you continue to have comments on the bridge and issues that you want raised, please attend the meeting and talk to the MinDOT representatives. We heard late last week that Garvin Heights is going to be closed for a couple of weeks for a construction project coming up as early as Friday of this week. I just want the council to know and the public to know that the public, our law enforcement areas have researched the issue. We are going to enter into mutual aid agreements with Wilson Township Fire Department to help provide fire service while our trucks are getting to the sites. The residential areas since Garvin Heights will be closed, and our police department will be working with the sheriff's office to provide service if they happen to be closer than our current police officers. It obviously will be somewhat of a route for the residents to be able to get in and out of their homes and back into the city, but we understand that the construction projects are important and Garvin Heights needs to be closed in order for this piece of work to be done. So we are aware of it, and we are making sure that our public safety people know what they need to do and how to work.
What are they going to be working on?
They're going to be installing a new culvert under Garvin Heights Road, and it will end up blocking the road during that piece of construction, which could be anywhere from two to four weeks. So it is a period of time. And my last item is, I just wanted to bring the council up to date on the Bike Path Project and the Challenge Grant that we received. The council did receive, and the city received a Challenge Grant offer of $140,000 contribution with matching funds of $140,000. As of today, I've been informed that $90,000 of that match has been raised, and the goal is to raise the remainder by August 15th, and we'll see where we end up at that point in time. And we'll be back to council on the funding. And that's all.
Thank you, Judy. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the license agreement for the Great Dakota Gathering on September 13 through the 15th. Move to approve that.
Second.
Moved by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Jerry, none? We'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.2 is a request to hold a 5K by C Performance Arts on August 31st at Lake Winona.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.3 is the Maury Miller 5K request for September 14th at the Westlake. Move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle.
I'll second.
Seconded by Al. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.4 is a request to close a street for the block party. I did note to the council via email, and I have that here also, the petitioners would like to have High Forest closed instead of St. Charles Street. So it would be High Forest between Second and Third.
I would move to approve that request with the change.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any other discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.5 is a sign request by the Winona Rotary Club for the Ride the Ridges Bike Tour from September 9th through the 23rd. I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
I just, I looked at the routes. Wow. I just want to say wow. There's not an easy one among them.
I think it's a beautiful sign, too.
Yeah, it is.
Any other discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request for street closure by Cathedral to have Center Street between Sixth, or excuse me, between Seventh and Eighth Streets closed on October 26th. That'd be the Saturday. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request for no parking by Winona State for special event on Friday, September 20th, and this would be in front of Lord's Hall at 457 Gold Street.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.8 is a request to close Grand Street for a neighborhood picnic on Saturday, September 6th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.9, the Z Studio Street Closure Request for Friday, October 11th, and this would be Liberty Street from Third Street North, one-half block to the alley. Move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.10 is a request from Hope Lutheran High School for signs and banners. They do have four different requests, and in reviewing those four, I would note that the two for the enroll now do not appear to meet our sign guidelines in that we allow signs for nonprofit events, and these do not appear to be for events. So staff would recommend that the other two be considered, but the signs for enroll now not be considered.
I'd move to approve the request excluding the two enroll now, banner and sign.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. We're in the discussion. Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.11 is a request for premises permit for lawful gambling for the Goodview Activity Group to be used at MC's Bar at 102 Johnson Street. I'd move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.12 is a request by Zazaz Pub and Pizzeria to close Mark Street from Huff to Harriet. Staff would note, or has a recommendation rather than the full block, we would recommend a half-block from Huff West, a half-block to the entrance to the parking lot behind Zazaz, and that one lane be kept open for access to the lot at 553.
I would move approval of that request with those stipulations.
I'd second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Any problem reducing it by that size and still having the event?
I did talk with the manager at Zazaz, and he was open to having that portion of the street. I think if you look at the maps that we've included, it would just make it too difficult for that number of off-street parking.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jerry?
This is appearing as if it's a, I mean, the way it's written, I'm an intern. This is for Winona State, and this is for Zazaz, correct?
But Mayor and Council, yes, I confirm that Ms. Heinz does work with Zazaz, and I did talk to the manager, confirmed this request is for Zazaz. It would be an event for their business.
Okay. Have we done, I'm sure we have, but from time to time we do close streets down that will benefit a particular business?
Yes, there have been other events.
I just, I just thought that this was rather interesting, and a play on words and how it's being presented, just want to make sure that people that are voting on it know what they're voting for.
And I would add, Councilman Craig, that we've closed a parking lot just recently to benefit another business on a temporary basis as well, and that seemed to have worked out well. Right. That's a good point.
Any other discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is a request to vacate Bridge Street. And there are a number of documents attached to this request. First is the ordinance to vacate the current Bridge Street. Second is the utility easement over the vacated street. Thirdly is the permanent drainage utility and roadway easement over the new street, and finally a development agreement for the construction of the street. We recommend two separate motions, one on the ordinance and the second on the other documents. I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance vacating the current Bridge Street.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, oh, George.
Now, all this was done back, a meeting several months ago to make this portion of it happen, right?
Back in December, I think.
Yes, December.
Okay.
Any other comments? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Then I'd move to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the remaining documents.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion? Mr. Hud?
One quick comment, that the motion includes approval and then authorization for the appropriate city officials to execute the documents, which will include the two easements and a development agreement. Execution of the documents would not take place until following second reading on the ordinance to vacate, as well as being subject to receipt of a letter of credit in accordance with the development agreement and a release of any encumbrances on property being required.
Thank you for clearing that up.
So then I just changed what I'm saying to not execute, but to allow the documents stated to be filled out and filed properly, so we can execute at the next meeting. How's that?
Do you want, just a point of order, do you want a separate motion at the next meeting to approve execution, or can they execute upon approval of the ordinance?
One motion now I think is sufficient, it's just you're basically approving the documents and authorizing the execution, subject to receipt of a letter of credit.
Okay, what is that?
George?
Is, is there an actual need to rebuild Bridge Street? I mean, you know, I go by it every day. Do we need to move a fire hydrant and some poles as well, too, to build this new street?
Mayor and Council, the viewpoint of staff was the property further to the north could develop to a further extent, and rather than have them go a number of blocks in the direction, it would be appropriate to maintain an access in the middle of that block, otherwise it gets to be a real long way across. At this point, they're not moving any utilities, but at some point in the future it could be moved, but it's, they would not pay the city's expense, they're not going to move.
Now, the business can go ahead and expand without the street being developed, correct? I mean, the street doesn't have to be developed before the business expands.
I don't know if that's in my opinion.
Yes, I think I can help with that question.
Okay.
Councilmember Borzakowski, in this instance, the, in order to fit the new development on the building, it's important that the street be vacated for setback reasons.
Okay.
So it's, it's an important piece of the redevelopment of the property.
Okay, but I say, but...
It's changing the public right away.
Okay, but they can go ahead and begin without that street being put in?
Without the construction being completed, yes.
Right, okay. All right, good. Go ahead, Al.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Nelson, the 10-ton route that will be reconstructed, that is a truck route? Or will that, it says it's going to be constructed as a 10-ton route?
I don't know. I don't know the answer if that's a non-truck route system or not.
Okay, I don't either, that's why I'm asking, you know.
But being it's an oxygen industrial area, we would expect it to be built to that standard.
Right, and would it, I mean, obviously the city has approval of the curb and the gutter and runoff and stormwater control, and that will be taken care of in this development agreement. Good. Thank you.
George?
I believe that is a truck route in Rich. Do you know exactly? On Bridge Street, I think it has a yellow marking on it.
I'm not sure if the same one as three is going to be a thorough access.
Right, right. Okay. And I guess a big thank you...
Actually, it needs to be a truck route. My ordinance.
And certainly a big thank you to that business for the company that they purchased and brought it here to Winona. So that's a big plus and a big thank you to them.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is a request to approve the adoption of the ordinance to issue general obligation economic development bonds for the Winona Municipal Airport improvements. I'd move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2 is the orderly annexation request for Mayor Gates for 23125 County Road 17.
I would move to approve the request for annexation.
Motion by George.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.3 is a transit grant application for 2014. State and federal grants will provide 80% of our gross operating cost and also 80% of the capital funds for the replacement of two buses. I'd move to approve this request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Al?
Will the buses be any kind of energy-efficient propulsion systems, or will they be the same as we have now?
Mayor and Council, we're required to purchase off the state contract, and they have not yet compiled that for 2014. At this point, with the size buses that we have in our fleet, I would say the answer is likely to be no. There, the costs on the electric buses is more than double the gas or diesel. There are no manufacturers that are making buses with LP, although we are, could look at that as an aftermarket modification to the buses, and as well as CNG is a potential, but as an initial purchase, it's unlikely. It'll probably, most likely be gas vehicles.
I would encourage that track of trying to convert and be more efficient and more responsible in the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.4 is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement for the 2013 through 14 academic year.
Move to approve that agreement. Motion by Al.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.5 is the proposed amendment for the Heritage Preservation Commission. I'd move to approve that request, or to introduce the attached ordinance, sorry.
Motion by Michelle. I'll second.
I'd like to amend.
Neil DePaul.
Seconded by Paul.
I'd like to amend it. On number four, I'd like to add the sentence, "One member of which shall be available to a member of the planning commission unless they find no one willing to..." I'll repeat it again. "One member of which shall be available to a member of the planning commission unless they find no one willing to serve." So I'd still like to leave that option to have somebody from the planning commission on that board, but understand their dilemma in not getting people from the planning commission to serve. So I'm simply saying that I think it's still good to have that lay us on.
And I would agree. If we were many years on that board, we were always eager to have somebody from the planning commission, so I think it's good.
I think it's harmless, it doesn't change the net effect, but what it does is say, seek out somebody from the planning commission.
Are you suggesting they do that when a seat is available?
Yes, that they, because currently, right now, they have the vacancy, and what it just does is simply saying, "Search out someone who's willing to serve. If they are fine, if they're not, you can still get somebody to fill that void."
I guess I don't have a problem with that amendment.
Potentially, you would fill the commission, and then, you know, if somebody from the planning commission wanted to be on there, they wouldn't be able to bump somebody, though, right? Okay, I just want to make sure.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, too. When there's a seat, I think it should say when a seat is available.
Does this leave that committee at an even number of members, then?
The same number of members, you know, it'll be 11.
So we're not totally taking one away?
No.
Okay.
So, so for clarification, this would be then, councilperson double, a voting member?
They, they would serve as the, as a planning member could currently serve, but if there is nobody on the planning commission who is willing to serve, it opens the door for someone from the general public to fill that board.
Under the terms of...
Under the amendment, yeah. But it says to the, this historical group asks the planning commission if somebody wants to serve, and if they are, then they should be on there.
Basically, I think we're just leaving four but adding the wording that if no one's willing to serve, they'll find someone else from the general public that will serve.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
So is this a revision of the...
My motion.
Ordinance?
It's an amendment to the...
Or an amendment?
Amendment. Yeah, vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, I'm just going to procedurally, if we vote first on the amendment, then on the introduction.
Unless you can make it part of the original motion.
I did, I said I was okay.
Then you don't have to have an amendment.
Yeah, I was, I said I was okay making it part of my motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Very none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
And we are to item 7.1, council concerns.
We'll start with Al. Thank you, Mayor. Again, I join with you in sympathy for the Jim Erickson family. I didn't know, got to know Jim and Ruth through the Historical Society and Step On Guides that we all learned from Jim on how to do coach tours of Winona the right way. So his loss is definitely felt. The Blandon Foundation, which has been active in Minnesota in rural areas for a long time, their community leadership program is again available in the Winona area, and I, I think we've had, gosh, I don't know how many people go through their community leadership program. I know I was in the first group that went in 1991. It was very valuable. And there's another group, Blandon is supporting from Winona. They are having an informational meeting on that this Thursday, August 8th, and it'll be 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Live Well Winona office, and that's at 619 Huff Street in Suite B. So if you're interested, you can contact them or contact the folks at Live Well, and I'm sure they'll give you the information on that. And then I also would encourage folks to attend the last two remaining Winona Municipal Band Concerts that are being held at the Band Shell, Wednesdays at 8:00. The one coming up this Wednesday, I think, will be very special. As usual, they provide a wonderful program, but this time Dr. Frank Burris, who is a wonderful clarinet player in addition to being, Al, writing the column in the paper, and he and I kind of conversed about puns a lot, but we both like puns anyway. He's going to be doing the clarinet polka. So that'll be, I think, a special moment for Wednesday's concert, 8:00 at the Band Shell at Lake Park. the Band Shell at Lake Park. So be there. Thank you, Al.
Jerry?
Friend of the city and a person who sat in his chair off and on, Doc Call, he's under the weather in the hospital, so best wishes to, to him. We spent the beginning of this meeting talking quite a bit about it, it looks like our tenth annual Great Dakota Gathering, and one person who would have been here for the last nine years talking about it, John Borman, he's still in the hospital, and I'm not even sure where he's at right now. I know they moved him a couple times. Judy, do you know?
I don't know right now.
Okay. But I'm sure everybody joins in, wishing him the very best. Think about him every day, but especially this weekend, there's nothing that's going to be going on down there this weekend that doesn't have his fingerprints on it in some capacity, so wish him well this weekend in your hearts.
Thank you, Michelle.
I have a few things. One, I got a email yesterday or this morning about the dog park, and I know at one point we were looking at opening a dog park. I'd just like an update on where we are in that process, if we're still looking for community involvement, if there's a committee. I'm not sure where we were in the process. I know there was some, somebody looking into it, but I, I would just like to be able to get, Maynard, you know, I'd just like to be able to get back to the people that keep asking about the dog park.
If I could have a few seconds, I did talk to Maynard about that, I probably got the same email, and it all ties in with the Emerald Ash Borer process that we're using that area for storage of the trees, and once that's done, I think, then we'll see some movement on the dog park issue. That's the short and skinny of it.
Thanks, Al. And then just, last year, we passed, I guess, an ordinance change to the water bill being part of the landlord's responsibility during recertification, and I think I expressed at that time my concern that people wouldn't understand what that meant. And just to illustrate that, I mean, our office got a letter that says, "Urgent, water bill needs to be paid," but it doesn't tell them why. And I'd just like it if we could put on those letters when they go out that tells them if they don't get that water bill paid, even if it's $10, they're going to lose their rental license. Because I think, I knew about it because I sit here, but I think there are people who maybe rent out their duplex or have someone that live with them that pays the water bill ongoing, would get this and not know what it means. So I just want to make sure that we can add that to that letter, because there will be people who will not, yeah, who won't understand. And then my, my third thing, I guess, is when we have an amended ordinance and we're going into a second reading, can we include in the packet the amended ordinance so that all of us are clear when we go to do the consent agenda what exactly it is that we amended it to say, in case there's some confusion as we get to the table? And if we can just make that part of the packet so we know what we did, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you. Paul?
I have kind of a pet peeve, but I'm going to just read it, because I think it makes more sense or less sense. Whereas the city of Winona desires to promote practices which reduce the impact of the city and those of its employees on the environment. Whereas the city of Winona has limited resources to inspect and control ordinance thirty-two oh-three, which limits the growth of weeds and/or grass to a maximum of eight to six inches, resulting in several enforcement issues between May and September for compliance. And whereas many of the city's property owners continue to violate and disregard the provisions of this ordinance without penalty, and others expending unreasonable time or resources to be in compliance. Whereas Chapter sixty-seven oh-three acknowledges the impact of stormwater drainage, and particularly when yards are in compliance with this ordinance, as velocities of runoff are increased and are undesirable to adjacent properties requiring public resolution. Whereas most lawn maintenance regulated by City Ordinance thirty-two oh-three requires the city to bring said property into compliance, or to do so either by the owner or said property of which the city requires the use of their equipment, most often operated by gasoline and diesel fuels, increasing the level of exhaust into the air without any purpose other than cosmetic. Whereas the natural habitat of rabbits, gophers, squirrels, raccoons, and other animals native to the area would be improved if thirty-two oh-three did not exist. Whereas property owners or city personnel to be in compliance must consume fuel, time, energy for no logical benefit, and most often forcing them to pollute the air and adding to the runoff of nitrogen and other plant pollutants. Therefore, the city of Winona consider repealing the six-inch requirement of thirty-two three during the period of May through September to further suspend and further suspend the storm drainage runoff fees, commonly referred to as rain tax, for those who desire as an ecological sound practice to eliminate cutting the grass.
Okay, thank you. George?
Thank you. Just to announce that tomorrow night is National Night Out here in Winona. There will be a gathering at five-thirty, from five-thirty to eight, at the East Endrec Center and at the Maplewood Town Homes. There will be hot dogs served, light refreshments, games, they'll be supervised, and police will be there, fire will be there, and it's really, really a neat event. So that's tomorrow night, five-thirty to eight, East Endrec Center, Maplewood Town Homes. And the sponsors of this National Night Out, I'm glad to say, is, again, The Target Store and Live Well Winona, and I thank them for their donations towards this very, very fine project. I would also like to congratulate Don and Ruth Marg on celebrating sixty years of marriage. Also, I'd like to congratulate and thank Sergeant Gary Hepner for his twenty-five years served with the Winona Police Department, and wish him well in his new position that he'll be undertaking, and he certainly has seen a lot of changes over the last twenty-five years in, in equipment, things that they use, and people. Everything kind of changes over the years, so thank him very much and wish him well. And also, I'd just like to go ahead and pass out condolences to Tom Lane, Tom Lane Senior and his family on the passing of his son, Tom Lane Junior, and wish them well during their healing process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are five items. The approval of the minutes from July fifteenth, the final adoption of an ordinance to establish handicap parking on Chatfield Street, the final adoption of the ordinance to amend the B two-point-five zoning district, the ordinance to amend the Human Rights Commission, and a claim against the city by Stegan Gross and Von Holton on behalf of Mark Neyland.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George.
Could we please pull eight point three for a separate vote?
Eight point two or three, three?
Three.
All those in favor of the motion, taking eight point three out, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item eight point three, then, is the final adoption of the ordinance to amend the B two-point-five zoning district. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, seconded by George. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
All those in favor of the jury signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.